The top parts, everybody knows what we're doing.
There's nobody on the line, we don't need to.
There's nobody on the line, so.
Oh, okay.
Give it.
Okay, we'll do it, uh, we'll do that. I will do the pledge allegiance to the flag. Uh, I would do it so that we try to all stay together. I pledge allegiance to the flag.
United States of America. United Republic.
We're just standing.
One nation.
Under God. And in the world.
With liberty.
Very good. David, go ahead.
For all.
All right, let's observe a, a moment of silence, uh, for our first responders, our police, um, and those that go into harm's way every day in the military to maintain our liberty. All right, thank you.
Thank you, David. Uh, I, I need to announce that the spending is being livestreamed. John, uh, we still have zero?
Yes, yes, Marty.
Yes.
Yeah, that's, that's interesting. Uh.
I would move, we do a consensus motion and just approve the whole agenda.
Yeah, I agree. I'll second that.
I'll tell you one, you've been, you've been around him too long, David. He's starting to rub off with you. Uh, as far, there's no public hearings tonight. Would you, Mike, would you just calm down, please?
Sorry.
Get done before you.
Sorry.
We need to get done and make sure you don't miss your bedtime. Uh, the chairman's report, the chairman's report, we, we met in an executive session to discuss a personnel matter. And Angelina Machia and Jeff O'Donnell have resigned from the Sustainability Advisory Committee, uh, which is obviously why we're interviewing people. Uh, the next item is item seven, uh, it's the emergency services report. Uh, Chief, do you want to give your report and then Ricky, I'd ask you to give the other three?
Okay, uh, good evening, everyone. Uh, in response to the, uh, coronavirus, we've modified our response protocols to provide additional protection to the citizens and also to the residents. Uh, we apologize if it's causing anyone any inconvenience. Uh, we hope to open our administrative office and our lobby as soon as possible. And also, I'm, I'm happy to report that our officers currently have an adequate supply of personal protective equipment. And as a result, we've been able to minimize the exposure of the officers. Uh, with regard to trends, overall, the department is experiencing a decrease in the amount of calls that we're responding to. Uh, for example, the amount of crashes that we're, uh, handling right now are significantly lower than normal due to the reduced amount of traffic. However, it is important for everyone to know that we are experiencing an increase in certain types of calls, such as child abuse reports, disturbance and domestic violence calls. Uh, for example, we had a, a suicidal barricaded gunman in East Goshen within the last three weeks. We encourage residents to call us if they need assistance during the difficult times that we're all going through. We can guide you in getting some of the resources that will help you and your family. At the same time, I also want to point out to everyone, um, that we're trying to encourage residents again to sign up for Crime Watch, a, a program that the department has purchased that, uh, facilitates communication between the department and the community members. Um, we're going to highlight it in the upcoming township newsletter. But in addition to providing a wealth of information, we want to remind residents that it's a primary way that we will begin communication during an emergency. Uh, for example, during that barricaded gunman, um, some individuals literally walked out of their house into the middle of that incident because they were unaware of it. Um, reverse nine-one-one only works for home phones. It will not work for anyone who does not have a home phone. Uh, we sent out an emergency broadcast, but a lot of people were not signed up for our Crime Watch. So we like to encourage people to sign up for Crime Watch so that if an emergency happens, it's designed to communicate with you on your cell phone. You're immediately notified, no matter where you are. So, um, we hope residents will sign up for Crime Watch moving forward.
Chief, when you, yeah, Chief, when you talk about the home phone, does that mean it doesn't work for any mobile phones or it has to be a, a landline or?
Landline, um, reverse nine-one-one will only work for landlines.
Okay.
So if you don't have a landline in your house or you're not at your house, you will never get a reverse nine-one-one call.
Right.
Excuse me, uh, we have a caller. I'm going to let them in the meeting.
I'm sorry, I, I can't hear you.
We have a caller coming into the meeting. Um, we have a guest. Caller who just entered the meeting with phone number ending in four, seven, five, can you please state your name?
Christina Morley.
Hi Christina, welcome to the meeting.
Thank you.
Sorry for the interruption, Chief. Go ahead, you can continue.
Uh, is there, are there any questions from the board or from anyone else? Uh, questions about anything that the department's currently experiencing or handling or protocols?
How's your burglaries with, how, with, with respect to the cars at night?
Um, we will always have problems with thefts from vehicles. That, that is a recurring problem. Um, most people don't realize that the vast majority of thefts from vehicles are, uh, either kids trying to get a little bit of money or drug addicts trying to fuel their habit. And even in a time like this, uh, addictions don't take a vacation and don't obey pandemic rules. So that will always be a problem for us.
Chief, I have a question. It's Michelle. Um, I was wondering, you said that there's about a thirty percent increase in child abuse calls. Um, is that a thirty percent increase over what the department would normally get? Or is that including the school resource officers? What they would normally be dealing with during school time?
Um, what we did was I took a one-month snapshot for that data that I gave to the, the board of supervisors. I looked at April twenty nineteen to April twenty twenty. And although it is always dangerous to take just one month of statistics.
Right.
I just used that to show everybody that, um, being home, some of the fears that people have expressed about domestic violence and child abuse would appear at this point, based on limited data, to be substantiated. Um, it, it is unfortunate, but, um, those are the calls overall that the department are handling. That's everything from school resource officers, uh, to regular patrol officers.
Okay, so that does include the number of cases that school resource officers may have been dealing with? Okay.
No, that's just brand new calls. That's just received calls. So, um.
I'm, I'm not making myself very clear. I'm trying to find a better way to say it. Um, if school resource officers were actually working in the schools currently, would they have received that thirty percent that you're now seeing come directly to the department? Is it higher percentage than before?
There is an increase in, in, that's what I'm, I'm trying to project is that doesn't matter who receives it, um, there is an increase in, we don't know if, you know, quite honestly, we don't know if more people are talking to their therapist and reporting things.
Okay.
Or, um, you know, we're not really sure why it's happening, just that we're getting more calls about child abuse.
We have a, uh.
Anybody else?
Wait, Susan.
We have a caller. I, I need to, I need to let a caller in, so, um, just a second, please.
Thanks, Chief.
You're welcome.
On, move on, move on.
Caller who just came into the meeting with phone number ending in six-two-nine, can you please state your name?
Uh, Russ Frank.
Russ, welcome to the meeting.
Um, wait, wait, before we move on, um, great, um, John Herzog is not able to speak. He's showing as muted on his screen. So, John, can you, you can hear us, but can you speak or not?
He shows as unmuted on, on.
He's unmuted, so something happened with his microphone.
Okay. So should he drop off and come back?
There it goes.
There we go.
Oh, there you go.
Okay.
All right, let's go.
Everybody, everybody back in business?
Yep.
I wasn't going to say anything anyway.
Great.
Hey Ricky, do you want to give the fire marshals, the fire reports for Goshen, Malvern and Good Fellowship?
Goshen had fifteen fire calls for the month of April and a hundred and thirty, uh, basic life support, thirty ambulances. The Malvern Fire Company, which does the small upper corner of the township, had two fire calls and six ambulance calls or basic life supports. On the advanced life supports, which are the medics, um, Malvern, which does the eastern half of the township, had thirty. And Good Fellowship, which does the western half of the township, had thirty-one.
Wow. And there's no fire marshal reports.
Thanks.
I think our medical plan's to be addressed, but other than that, it's pretty quiet.
John, you want to give your financial report?
The treasurer's report?
No, your financial report, number eight.
Oh, sorry, I'm sorry, it comes, sorry, you're right, um. Yeah, um, we have, there was a, you know, a modest decline on the general fund side. We now have a negative budget variance, forty-five thousand, three hundred and twenty-eight dollars. Very modest in the grander scheme of things. So just observe, I'm watching income tax receipts come in and, and they're down from where I would expect for May. That represents the quarter one disbursements. But the reason it's down, as I said bef, as I've sort of alluded to before, is because the filing deadline has been moved from April fifteenth to July fifteenth. Typically get about three hundred thousand dollars extra in the May disbursements from that April fifteenth deadline. By moving the deadline back, maybe some deferred revenue. So right now, things are still appear to be on target. As I said, the, the, the big drop should occur when we get the August disbursements in a few months. Um, on the spend side, you know, expenditures are, are, are pretty solid, under budget across the board. Um, on the, on, on the, you know, the revenue side, you know, as I said, the EIT can kind of be explained away right now for now. One of the things that's surprisingly how well it's doing is real estate transfer tax. Um, the, the May payment that we got reflecting April sales was surprisingly strong. I mean, it was below where it would be in a normal year, but it wasn't off the charts low. So that's a good sign with the, you know, house closings in, in April, when you expect to be pretty much zero, we're not. Um, you know, permit activity is still pretty strong, um, Mark, Mark, whereas, as Mark Gordon can attest to, so the other shoe is not dr, the shoe hasn't dropped yet. As amongst other funds, there's really nothing out of the ordinary there.
Okay, anybody have any questions for John? Thank you, John, appreciate it. Uh, let's move on to the, uh, finance, uh, the, uh, the minutes in the financial report. I, I have looked at the minutes very carefully and I don't see any problems with them whatsoever. So if somebody wants to make a motion, it's okay by me.
I have one comment. Uh, page two, line thirty-nine. I would suggest the word fatalities be changed from fatalities to deaths. Fatalities often imply an accident or something of that nature.
Yeah, I agree with that.
I think it's a more appropriate, it's more appropriate.
I have no, I have no problem with it.
I don't want to talk about it. I just think that's a good, good change, that's all. That's all I got.
Fine.
So, David, you want to make the motion?
Before they're approved, do we need to ask the public? Do we need to? No?
David makes the motion and then we.
Oh, okay, sorry.
Yeah, I, I'd like to move that we approve the minutes of, uh, the Board of Supervisors meeting Tuesday, May fifth, um, with the changes that Mike noted.
I'd second that.
Okay, all those in favor?
No, no, public comment?
We have to have public comment.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry about that. Forgot there's people there. Is there any, any comments from the public? Susan?
Okay.
I am muted, I am muted the guest, if you have any, uh, public comment?
Thanks. All right, good.
Okay, I think you're good, Marty.
Thank you. All those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Five oh, thank you, John. Uh, we'll move right on to the treasurer's report. Mike or whoever reviewed it, uh, you got any comments to make before David makes a motion?
I, I don't have any, um, uh, substantial comment. I, I was curious, John, on batch four of six, page four, uh, the top, top expenditure for, to, with, for Higgins. But it, it's a, I know we had the, uh, the device that had to be replaced over on Wilson, uh, drive, I guess, for ninety-three hundred dollars, but it seems like a lot, or is that just a lot of purchases at this time of year?
That, that's just the, a lot of it's just the annual, like, traffic signal.
That's what I was thinking.
But there's that, that big, bigger ninety-three hundred and change one. Cause like the, the preemption system that had been used at that intersection is no longer made and so.
Yeah.
Place it with a newer model.
And we, we do not put funds aside, capital funds for traffic light replacements, is that correct?
No, no, uh.
This is maintenance.
Yeah, this is maintenance. This is.
Every, every year.
Wait, Rick, we do.
Hold on, there was a capital item potentially.
Yeah, for, for, for replacement of traffic signals, yes. For maintenance, things like a preemption system, that's just, uh, that's, that's just a general fund expense.
Okay, it's, you know, it was ninety-three hundred dollars and some are, some smaller municipalities, that would be a lot of, uh, East Goshen can absorb it through operating. Okay, that's all I had.
Okay.
Okay, David.
Mr. Chair, and I'd like to move that we graciously accept the receipts and approve the expenditures, uh, except there was a, a, a note about, uh, one thousand four hundred and twenty-nine dollars and six cents payment uh, to transportation, planning and design, which will be reissued as a payment from the Capital Reserve Fund. Um, and so I'd like to move that we approve them as presented with that note. And pay the, uh, the bills from the expenditure register summarized in the treasurer's report.
For a second?
Second.
Susan, is anybody up there want to make any comments?
Any, any public comment? Christina or Russ? No, you're good, Marty.
Thank you. Uh, all those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Thank you, five oh. Thank you, John.
John, thank you.
John has to write this down and he has to get it right, so you guys don't pick one, John, please. Because John's doing a great job. I sound like Trump, don't I? Well, item ten is all business, there is none. We move to item, uh, uh, number eleven. The first item is eleven A, which is the recommendation of the proposed budget cuts. John, do you want to introduce this subject and then we'll go from there?
Yeah, I mean, in, in, this is, this was, uh, Michelle brought this up, uh, a month ago or so, Finance Committee met. Um, we identified a little less than five hundred thousand dollars in, in kind of low-hanging fruit savings for this year, um, to weather the expected financial storm, um, from a downturn in revenue, particularly our income tax, uh, presumably real estate transfer tax, uh, a few other things, interest income certainly. Um, so, um, we, we identified a total of four hundred seventy-three thousand, nine hundred thirty-one dollars worth of savings. Most of these savings are not strictly savings, are more of a deferral. For, a, a big example is deferring the Bowtree Pond dredging project until next year. But at least in the short term, it manages cash flow and gets us closer to a balanced budget for this year. Um, I sort of view this as a kind of a first stage, there's, there's probably additional things that we can, we can, um, identify if, if, if the economic situation really, really deteriorates. But certainly going into the twenty twenty-one budget, uh, in a few months, you know, we're going to have to sort of think long and hard about what the nice to have versus the needs to have. My recommendation is that the, the board, um, basically, uh, implement these budgets, direct the staff to implement these reductions at a future meeting, hopefully that the June ninth meeting be able to have firm numbers on the impact, the financial impact of the two thousand twenty, uh, police arbitration award. Um, and at that time, we can formally amend the budgets, reflect that arbitration award plus these budget cuts.
John, just a question on the budget, on the proposed budget cuts. Of course, we have three layers of them, one, two and three. Uh, is it any, is there any reason to vote them now before we know how many we need to do? Because I think, I think the one, two, three is a priority kind of a thing.
Yeah.
I, I don't, I, I don't know that we need to do it until we know we have a problem.
I mean, if, if we look at the, the second list, we, we had a, this isn't in the memo, but there was, there was a list that sort of had green, orange, red.
Yes.
Um, orange category, um, you know, the, the, those can actually be implemented, um, or one of the recycling events can be, could, could, the fall one could theoretically be, um, at a later date, the further reduction in the transfer of the capital fund would happen at the end of the year. Um, so, I mean, what I would recommend is you hold off on them now. If by August, we see that there's a worsening condition, you know, then maybe we address them. That would be my recommendation. But, you know, also Marty, it's, this isn't a mistake to think of this as a one-term, one-time event. I mean, there's going to be, you know, gradual recovery, whether it's V-shaped or W-shaped or U-shaped or whatever, um, you know. Going to be talking about budget cuts for twenty twenty-one as well. I think this gets us, you know, a good, a, a nice runway so that we don't have a cash flow issue towards the end of the year and puts us positioned to think long and hard about the twenty twenty-one budget.
Now, if your recommendation is to do it now on, uh, on the first phase, I'm fine with that. I, I just raised the question only because it seems, I mean, i- in my house, I, I do things when, once I realize I got a problem. But, you know, I could understand, and we're probably going to have a problem, so I don't think it's going to be, it's going to be a big deal, one way or the other.
Again, these are recommendations, Marty. These are recommendations and they're not, it's not as if we're doing a budget amendment. Uh, so I think that it's a, it's a, it's a smart, good start for John to get us thinking about this, seeing some, some actual numbers. Uh, I, I think it's a, you know, as, as he said, it's a good start to the runway here and, 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 um, I, I really think he's done a really good job to outline it and, uh, get the cooperation from the staff.
And I would like to point out one other thing too, and this isn't in the memo, I, this is my oversight. Um, there, you know, our Capital Reserve Fund is, you know, we, we fund it based on the accumulated depreciation of our assets on an annual basis. Um, we have a number, we have four replacement assets, um, that we were scheduled to replace this year that, that Mark thinks we could actually extend out another year. Um, those would be a two-ton trailer for twenty thousand dollars and a replacement shipper for forty-seven thousand, a sewer, a jetter, you know, to clean out the sewer lines for thirty-five thousand and a forklift for fifteen thousand. So collectively, that's a hundred and seventeen thousand dollars that Mark is proposing deferring, formally deferring until twenty twenty-one.
John, what, what is our contribution? I don't have the budget in front of me, uh, from the general fund to the capital, uh, capital contribution for this year.
I, I don't know it off the top of my head, but it's, it's, it's in the range of five hundred thousand dollars.
Okay, so clearly we have, that, that's, that's a big, um, that's a big one that we, we have some flexibility with, particularly because it comes at the end of the year, correct?
Correct, correct.
So I think that's a really good, um, uh, that's a, that's a good, um, uh, good tool, if you will, that if we need it, we could be more, we could be more extreme than just, I think you add a hundred thousand dollars.
We have a surplus, as I pointed out, we have a surplus.
Yes, exactly. You mentioned that giant goes like eight hundred or something like that. Okay.
Yeah, I think the, the Budget Committee made this recommendation based on the fact that, you know, right now, we're taking a swag at the impact of, of COVID on our revenues, and this is a prudent first step. But we've also planned, we also have step two and step three in the, in the works. Um, if we need to go there and we have more data regarding what our actual, uh, um, you know, revenue shortfalls will be, if any, as, as a result of COVID issues. I think that's, makes sense.
Um, I'd like to just say that I really appreciate, John, uh, your work on this. I know that this is not an easy task to have to go through and eliminate some of these items and, um, I think that we, we just really appreciate your hard work on that. Thank you.
My pleasure.
David, you want to make a motion?
I'd like to make a motion, um, that, uh, the township implement the budget reductions outlined in the, uh, table as presented to us.
For a second?
Yeah.
I'll second it.
Susan, anybody up there want to make, have any questions?
Christina or Russ, do you have any?
All right.
Hey, John?
Yes, Russ.
I do have a question on this, uh, this list of budget cuts.
Sure.
The, uh, the Paley Trail.
Mm-hmm.
Is that going to be part of this overall kind of, we don't meet the goals of the?
Well, right, so Russ, that's a good question. So right now, um, the, the, the big, you know, you're starting to see the roadwork, um, you know, in the reservoir road.
Right.
So that contract was awarded back in maybe November or December. And that, that's fully funded by state and federal grants.
Correct.
There's no, um.
Budget impact.
There's no, yeah, there, there's no, nothing to cut there at this point. It's already funded, so.
Yeah, that, yeah, I under, I understood that part, but isn't there also, um, part of this trail that the township residents are going to have to contribute to as well?
Sure.
Um, well, the engineering costs, uh, well, so, uh, Russ, you know, about three years ago, we issued, uh, general obligation bonds.
Yep.
For a variety of projects, and one of which was the, the, the sort of soft costs of the Paley Pike Trail. So that's engineering, acquiring easements, um, you know, those types of things. Um, and so we have a pot money from that bond fund that we're paying debt service on.
Okay.
That's already reserved for that. We are going to be talking tonight about an expenditure from that bond fund about the, the acquisition of the easements in, in front of YMCA. Um, but that's, it's not a general fund expense. I mean, it's, the debt service is a general fund expense, but the, 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 the actual p, payment of those checks will come from the bond fund.
I think Russ might be referring to the, the comments that were made about section B. Uh, where I know we're doing some things tonight, but, uh, there hasn't been a grant approved yet for section B. That's why that conversation has come up. We have not made a decision as to what we're going to do, other than get the appraisals lined up.
Correct.
But will, but will there be a big?
So I think that's what, I think that's what Russ was talking about.
Finish the question, Marty. What was that, Russ?
Yeah, the, the, I guess the real, the real quick question I have is, is there, do you have an, an idea of what it is going to cost the residents uh, for this, uh, trail at the end of the day?
Seven million.
No, 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 no. Mike, that's, that's not correct. Um, it's the, the soft costs, all total, um, the number two-point-seven million dollars rings a bell, but that's amortized over twenty years, so that's.
Okay.
Oh, you mean net out of grants and everything, John? Sorry about that. Sorry.
Yeah.
And that's, and that's on the twenty, that's on a twenty-year basis?
Yeah, amortized over twenty years.
Probably, it's going to be, that's probably be minimal impact on the tax structure?
Yeah, I mean, well, on the, on the tax structure, I mean, as far as raising taxes, um, that's, I mean, it's pressure on maybe a future decision, but doesn't, certainly doesn't force us, force our hands or anything like that.
Okay. That's what I was trying to get to. Thanks, John.
Thanks.
Anybody else, Susan?
Any other?
Um, John, it's Christina.
Hi Christina.
Hi, um, John, I'm wondering, um, has it been discussed, uh, the idea of recapturing any funds from the, um, trash and recycling vendor for the reduction in services?
Yeah, that's a good question. So, yeah, so, um, you know, I, I, let me answer in two parts and I'm going to basically punt on, because it's a public policy. You know, we lost, basically, what it really amounted to was we lost one, um, uh, leaf, uh, yard waste collection. The thing about yard waste, though, is it's kind of a profit center for the hauler. You know, they have to put trucks on the road and stuff, but they can sell that, you know, whether it's, it's mulch that they get from it or topsoil or whatever. So as far as, from that, it, it's really, it, it's really de minimis, uh, as I missed one pickup. As it is right now, Christina, um, you know, we're, the, the, the rate structure, the refuse fund doesn't fully recapture costs because of the, you know, the big cost driver for, for that contract is recycling is going up, up and up and up. And so, you know, we, we're reasonably raised rates by five dollars per quarter this, in, in January to get ahead at that increase. So as it is, the township, the, the fund balance of the refuse fund is, is already sort of subsidizing the, uh, the rates, just a little bit, like a dollar or something a year. So now, there's a larger question, though, about bulk trash, but when that's going to come back online? And you don't know that. And there's a decision that's ongoing and we need to monitor that. And as, as Ben's warrant, we need to. And as, as Ben's warrant, we need to circle back with, with the hauler. Once, once it becomes clear how long this is going to be out.
All right.
Right, so if that, if that either continues to not be an offered service or it extends out, is that something that you can circle back with the vendor and maybe negotiate a reduction in that contract?
Yeah, that's, that's a valid point. And then, you know, if it does come to, do we make up those bulk trash pickups with extra ones? Or do we try to negotiate a credit? That's just something the board will have to break, bring up with the board at a future meeting. We're going to know more.
Hey, John?
Yeah.
Mark?
Yeah.
I, we should know by Friday whether we start ball back up. I'm waiting to hear back from Belinsky and I will know by Friday.
Okay, awesome.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Everybody okay up there, Susan?
Yeah.
Before we move on, Marty, I just want to remind the public that's watching on YouTube Live that they can send email questions to info@eastgoshen.org. That's I-N-F-O at eastgoshen.org.
And I, I have to speak up for John. He's muted again.
No.
So I just got to get a mouse wash.
He shows up as, he shows up as okay.
All right.
All right.
How about now?
Okay.
That's weird.
We made, we made the motion, right, David?
Yeah, it's made in a second, so we need to vote.
He needs to put like a hand.
All, all those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. John can't reply.
Thank you very much.
John.
Wait, wait, Marty.
John's, John's vote's not counted at this point.
Can you, can you do the chat?
It's four, zero, and one mute.
I'm going to try muting everybody and then unmuting everybody just to see if that works. Just hold on for a second. How about now, John?
Got to move, he's got to move, he's in the wrong house.
Maybe he should, should, should he like hang up and try to call back?
Try to call back in, yeah.
Yeah, fresh calling.
Did it, what did you do?
I didn't do anything.
We just, we yelled.
Did you do that?
You're back.
Their motion was, was taken, are you, are you all right with it?
Yes.
All right. All right, good. Next.
He's good, that's five oh then, thank you. The next is the easement on section A. Ricky, you want to talk about that one or John?
The short story is, we're recommending that the board accept the proposal from Coyle Lynch and Company to do the appraisals for the four parcels. There's the two Hicks parcels and Hackett has two parcels, which is considered one property. And a Sarah has two parcels, which for appraisal purposes are considered one property. And the price from a coil and lynch, no relation to Mike, is $19,200. These are the same folks that we've used for all the others. And we're doing this because this complies with PENDAS procedures for getting appraisals done.
Okay, David, you want to make a motion?
Yeah, I'd like to move that the board accept the appraisal services proposed from Coyle Lynch and Company for the trail easement within segment B of the Paley Pike Trail in the amount of $19,200.
I'm going to second that. Is there any comments from the board members?
Yeah, I have a couple of questions. So these, these appraisals are budgeted and already are coming out of, what funds are they coming out of? I'm not sure that it's clear.
Come out of the bond fund, Michelle. So, yeah, they're, they're, and, and there's a, there's a paragraph in the next memo, because there, these things, two things overlap. They come out of the same pot of money. Soft costs are paid for from the bond funds, the hard costs are paid for from grants. We did receive like $473,000, I think, grant for the construction of segment A. And so, you know, as we can talk about it in the next one, the next item, which is talking about actually paying the appraisals for segment A. Once we've paid off those appraisals, I think we have something like $330,000 plus or minus to pay for easements for section B. And at that point, we'd have no more soft costs really left to speak of the trail.
You'd say soft cost, you mean cost that we pay?
Well, I mean, soft costs versus hard costs, meaning like a soft cost is engineering, you know, way acquisition, surveying.
Who pays that?
Construction.
It's usually, other than the construction.
Yeah.
We, we pay it.
Well, we, we were paying for it from the, the proceeds of the bond funds, yeah.
Yeah, the, John, these, these grants rarely include soft costs. It's all usually for the hard, hard mortar and bricks.
That's what I thought.
Okay.
Everybody okay? Susan, anybody up there have questions?
Any questions from the public? Nope, we're good, Marty.
Okey dokey, called a question, all those in favor of the motion? Aye.
Aye.
Is anybody opposed?
Nay.
Five oh, thank you very much.
No, it was not five oh.
No, it's four to one.
No, it was four to two. I said no.
Three to two.
Three to two, okay, got it.
I didn't hear, sorry about that. Okay, the next item is the item that John was talking about. Either John or Ricky, you want to fill us in on that one?
Well, we have solicited appraisals. We got an appraisals for the Thompson parcel, which is the bank, and the National Bank of Malvern, and that's the entrance for the YMCA on Paley Pike. They have been, appraisals have been obtained, they've been vetted by Coyle, has been in compliance. Kristen and Mark have talked to Thompson and the bank, and they're willing to accept them. So the motion is to authors, basically to authorize the chairman to sign the easements for the right away, and then we can disperse the funds to the.
Hey, David, you want to make a motion to that effect?
Yes, I'll move that the board supervisors are authorized, the chairman, to sign the for the two parcels, segment A of the Paley Pike Trail, and authorize staff to make payment to the property owner.
I'll second that.
Second?
Yeah.
Okay, is there any comments or questions from the board? Susan, how about your flock? Is any, any comments or questions?
Any comments from the public? I think you're good, Marty. No meme.
Thank you. Thank you, all those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Nay.
How many nays are there?
Two.
Two.
Three, three to two again? Three to two, okay, thank you very much. Next item is the item honoring Mark and his crowd.
No.
No, I'll say that back. It's Jason, I, I, I went too fast. Jason, you've got a whole bunch of stuff to talk about. Do you want to talk about it?
Yeah, sure. Tonight, I realized when I talked about the summer camp program, wanted to, you know, have, give, give you all a chance to, to ask any questions you might have. So, so, you know, obviously the summer camp program is, is the, the biggest thing that I do every calendar year. And with the coronavirus, we've been working with state officials to, to see how we can still offer a camp program, you know, safely and effectively and provide that service for the families in the area. And so the recommendations from the CDC and from the State Parks Rec Organization is that outdoor camps can operate when you're in the yellow zone, you know. So when Chester County moves into the yellow, the camp program itself, what would it look like? It would be in East Goshen Park at the Veterans Pavilion. The maximum would be 50 people total. So at first, we'd offer to up to 35 kids, up to 15 staff. And then some of the, the safety considerations would be all staff and kids are temperature checked before they, during drop off. And then standard temperature conditions, so hand washing stations placed right after the kids get out of the cars, hand washing throughout the day, disinfecting of any mutually touched areas. So, you know, I spoke with insurance solicitor about this and, you know, the, the state guidelines are what they are. So we're covered under our current insurance policies. If we open the camp in the yellow zone, I spoke with staff who are very excited about the opportunity. I was actually a little nervous to talk to staff about it, you know, because, you know, it's a serious, serious concern potentially. And after I got done with my little spiel, someone said, the only question I, or I said, does anyone have any questions? And someone, I don't, I don't remember who it was, said, you know, this is really special, Jason. You know, we could be like the first, you know, people that the kids get to see after, you know, the state home quarantine. So I thought that was a really nice, you know, thought by the camp staff that, you know, we can provide that service for, for the kids and the families. So, so the staff is really on board with it. I emailed the parents and I said, you know, given temperature checks and social distancing and face masks for the staff and hand washing and all that, you know, no field trips, you know, would you still want to come to the camp? Should we hold it? And it was about 75% said yes. You know, we really, we value the camp, we love the staff, we want our kids to have somewhere to go this summer. We want them to develop socially again and kind of, you know, deliver some level of normalcy. So that's what it would look like, you know, given Chester County, if we move into yellow June 4th, June 5th, give around that timeframe. We're scheduled to start on June 22nd. It'd be a half day program, five weeks, just like it always typically is. So under those, those dates and yellow zoning and all that would be June 22nd to July 24th. And we'd be in the park and it'd be a wonderful experience. What kind of questions do you all have?
I got a question for John or, John or Jason?
By Mike, by Mike.
Go ahead.
Jason, you mentioned the program would start with 50, 15 staff and 35 campers. What is the usual, that's a ratio of about one for every two campers? What's the normal ratio or the number of, of campers? That ratio, what is that under a regular season?
Typically 12 to one.
12 to one. And so in that, in that context, the 35 that are paying the camping fees, is the, and I'm sorry, I'm ignorant of this, the staffers, they're compensated?
Yeah, yeah, our staff are all, yeah, our, our staff are all paid.
The cost, the revenue, the receipts we're receiving versus the compensation for the staff, is that, is that an issue at all? I'm just asking the question, I'm not trying to throw a cloud over it.
Yeah, it, it, it won't be a concern simply because the, the expenses will drastically go down for other things, so like field trips, there's no bus rentals, there's no field trip ticket fees. So we'll be, you know, the, the expenses for wages will go up, field trips will offset that on the, on the, the, the black side. So, so, yeah, so to answer your question, yeah, you know, the, to, to meet the, the needs of having additional people on site, you know, the wages will go up, but we'll offset that with decreased expenses in other areas.
Okay, thanks, Jason.
That's, that's interesting. Thank you, Jason, and thank you, Mike. John or Jason, do you know what the expectation, or can you guess what the expectation is for the county or for the, yeah, for the county to be moved up to yellow? Is it, is it expected that that to happen? And because Jason was predicated, predicated on us moving up to yellow if, if we did, kind of like we were going to. Is that a fact?
I, I have, I have no indication that we'll move to yellow on June 4th.
Does John know?
I, I.
I'm just thinking of, I mean, I, I, I don't, my crystal ball is pretty, pretty cloudy. I don't know any more than anybody else does, yeah.
Hey Marty, I think that the, the health, State Department of Health, Dr., Dr. Levine, she will be monitoring it, I think, the, the cases, the positives and that curve and the trend up until the day of the decision. And I don't think anybody's going to know until we see what that, how that curve looks and the, including the mortality rate number as well. You're, you know, understanding that it's the elderly population that is being most impacted. I think that they're really going to be monitoring this up to the very last, last day before that next decision is made.
Yeah, I wouldn't, I wouldn't doubt that. Jason, that being the case, if you, if it doesn't go to yellow, does, does that mean the deal's off?
Yes.
So, yeah, so my communication to parents would be, you know, let's, let's just say that we, you know, we want to go forward with the camp in yellow. I would communicate to parents that, you know, we're going to go forward with yellow, and that date's to be determined. And as we approach June 22nd, week number one, that if we had, if we were still in red, then, you know, week number one would go away, week number two would go away. But I, I think they'd be appreciative of anything that we can deliver during the summer. And they would, you know, obviously be sensitive and understand if we're still in red, that we just can't offer the camp. So.
Yeah.
So we would be upfront with the parents and they realize, you know, that we're, we're doing our best to offer something if we can do that.
I have a question, Jason?
Go ahead, Michelle.
So, Jason, I'm just curious to know if, God forbid, we're still in the red at that point, let's say for the first week, would it be possible that you would still offer an opportunity to maybe have Zoom camp time at least so that the student, the, the campers can meet their counselors and that kind of thing?
Oh, yeah, absolutely, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, there, there are some other municipalities that are offering some level of a virtual camp experience.
Great.
And kind of like an all shoot of the joke day thing that we've been doing. I know my camp staff would love to do some kind of virtual Zoom program if we can't get in an actual onsite.
Okay.
I just have one further question, if I might. With, in regard to our insurance company, sounds like they've kind of signed off that this would be acceptable under the protocols and parameters that are outlined. Are we, for whatever value it may be, is there any kind of a waiver or any kind of a form or, or amendment to the form that we may already use with the campers and the parents on signing up for the camp under these conditions?
So that, that was one of my exact questions I asked of insurance was, do we need to update? They have our waiver on file, but
Yes.
I asked if this waiver was good or if we should do an addendum amendment, a coronavirus clause. And they said, no, your exact waiver will also cover you under the coronavirus.
Okay. Thanks.
Okay, does anybody else have any questions?
No.
I, I don't know, are we required to make, are we, either Ricky or John, are we required to make any, any motions regarding this, this particular situation? Because there's a lot of information in this, in this packet that we got from.
Thanks, so long as you've discussed it and acknowledged that, that the conversation. You know, normally, Jason would be empowered to have camp without your, your, your motion, so.
Okay, David, you want to, you want, you want to say something along that line?
Do, are, do we agree, do we need a motion?
No, we don't.
No, we don't. No, need a motion.
Okay.
The, the only reason we would need a motion is if we, we disagreed with this and we were going to cancel the camp. That's where we would have a motion.
Yeah, that's, I thought so, or just accept the, the report and the, and the discussion that we just had with, with Jason, acknowledge it.
Okay, that's fine, we don't, we don't need a second or anything, we just.
Nope.
The people upstairs, the people in the peanut gallery will have a chance to say something in the public comment period, if in fact they want.
I have a question.
So there isn't anything right now, Susan?
Okay.
The next item is the recognition of the Public Works Department. John or Ricky, whoever put the, the resolution together, do you want to make a comment on it?
He has put out a notice that May 23rd, May 17th, what is to the 23rd was National Public Works Week. We thought it'd be appropriate to honor the Public Works guys. As you know, several of them, in addition to working for East Goshen, are also volunteers at the, for the Ocean Fire Company. Interestingly, they responded this afternoon to a house fire. You know, and they were probably the first or second truck there. And also, you know, we talked about the unsung heroes during the, just recent virus. Yeah, those guys have been out there every day, checking the pump stations, making sure that the sewer flows, you know, making sure the bathrooms at the park are, are open after clean, picking up the trash. And we just think it's appropriate to, for the board to acknowledge it.
I agree. I agree. Anybody disagree with that?
No.
Hey, Marty, can I say something?
Sure.
Um, just like Ricky was, this afternoon, we did have a working house fire with entrapment in West Whiteland. And our, the truck from East Goshen was called in, and we had 10 guys on the truck, and it really made a difference.
Great. Good. Way to go.
Hey, hey, Mark, is anybody?
Hey, hey, hey Mark, is anybody else, uh, doing this besides us?
Uh, Euclid does it, but they respond to the firehouse and get a truck where is now Dusty, his role is every morning he picks the truck up and brings it to our shop. But nobody's doing, nobody's doing it like we're doing it. For example, two weeks ago, we had a house fire, they had a house fire in Malvern and our guys were the first ones there. So it's, it's, it's really, it's really shown a lot of people, it's a good program.
Yeah, I would say so. It's, it's one, it sounds to me, is though it should be emulated and I'm surprised that it's not.
I agree.
Um, David, you want to make a motion to the effect of the, uh, resolution?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion that we, uh, accept resolution twenty-twenty dash one-nine-four, honoring and recognizing the East Goshen Township Public Works Department as an exemplary service, providing exemplary service and ensuring that East Goshen Township remains the most desirable community in which to live, work, play in Chester County.
Is there a second?
A second.
Is there, Susan, does your flock have anything to say?
Christina, are we, you have any questions about the motion?
Uh, not about this motion, but I had a question for Jason and I wasn't able to ask it.
Well, we, we'll do that at public comment?
That's in the public comment period. Uh, the only time you guys have a chance to say something while we're going on is if we have to make a motion. Otherwise, everything will be done after you end of the meeting in the public comment period. That's how it works. Aye.
Okay, please ask him to stay for that, for that period.
Yeah, he'll be here.
Yep, I'm good.
He's, he's home anyway. He's not down here. He's, he's up in Allentown.
Allentown, he's in-
He's got his feet out.
Allentown.
Allentown.
Okay, uh, we haven't voted, right?
Aye.
All those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Does anybody opposed? No. Hey, uh, um, Michelle, what time is that thing on Wednesday?
Um, it's up to Mark Miller to tell us what time we are gonna be bringing pizza over for everybody.
No, we're still at noon, noon time works.
Noon time and how many pizzas?
Uh, that I don't know. I, they're, they're, they're a pretty big bunch of guys. I don't know. Uh, you guys determine it.
Okay, and, um, we will make sure that you have plenty of pizza for next Wednesday at noon.
Aye, will, thank you very much.
Where, where do you want it? Where do you want it?
Uh, we'll, we'll come up, we'll just, we'll do it in the, in downstairs in the lunchroom and hopefully, I'm gonna board members, and if possible.
Okay.
It's down in the back of the building in the, in kind of in, uh, almost before you get into the, uh, the building.
I might suggest you guys do it out in the, uh, in the, in the, the outside.
In the picnic area, that's perfect.
Picnic area, yeah.
Perfect. Okay.
Oh, just not raining.
Consider it done.
Thanks, Marty.
I, I, I tell you the truth, I, my brain must be stopping. Michelle, my, my brain must be about half of yours. Because I can't remember what we decided about the interview today. Are we gonna do that under any other matter?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think we, I think that that was the case.
Make the motion?
Well, un- under any other matter, uh, the, uh, board interviewed Kelly Marcus, uh, for a position on the Sustainability Advisory Committee. So I'd like to make a motion that we approve, uh, her application and appoint her to the Sustainability Advisory Committee.
Is there a second?
Second.
I'll second that.
Is your comments from the board or questions from the board?
I will abstain because I was not part of the interview.
I, I will say that she's a really excellent candidate for a number of positions within our township.
Oh, I was, I would agree with that. Um, is there, is there any, well, uh, Susan, I'll give the people an opportunity, but they weren't there either, but, but if they happen to know the lady, that's fine too.
All right.
Any questions from the public?
Okay, Marty, in favor, all those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye. Anybody opposed? Mike abstains, right?
Correct.
Four, four or one abstention, John. Thank you very much. Anybody else have any other matter? Ricky or John or anybody else?
No.
I have a question.
Um, yes.
And I, I probably don't want an explanation now, but it's for John or Rick. Um, on your number fifteen, the funding request from Malvern Fire Company. Um, can I get an explanation from somebody and it doesn't have to be-
Yeah, we haven't, we haven't got there quite there yet. You're a little ahead of the game. Well, we're-
Okay, okay.
We'll get back, we'll get there, we'll get there in just a second here. Let's just keep-
We're not taking action on this. It's only correspondence, right?
That's right.
You gotta do public comment.
We're actually on this.
Yeah, but anybody can make, anybody can have a comment about that. Wait, wait, wait till we get there. There is a public comment period, uh, Christina, where somebody up there had a question about something or other. Uh, Susan, you want to open the floor up?
They are open, yep, it's open. Go ahead, Christina.
Thank you. Um, I just have a, a couple of questions for Jason about the camp, um, proposal. Um, Jason, you mentioned that there were gonna be, um, sanitation and hand washing stations. But I didn't hear anything about how any equipment would be sanitized for, um, for the campers. So I'm wondering what kind of activities you were planning and if there were gonna be, um, you know, things like balls that would be handled or baseball bats or things that would be commonly touched by multiple people.
So, so the, the guidelines also have a fairly comprehensive piece on social distancing. So the camp, it kind of operates in what they're calling small groups or pods. So, kids are socially distanced by, by grade or by age. So, it'll be the five and six-year-olds together with their exclusive staff throughout the day, third, fourth graders, fifth, sixth graders, et cetera. Uh, and they'll all be given their own set of equipment that they use throughout the day. So, you know, as much as possible, we're gonna emulate a traditional camp program, which includes gym activities, arts crafts, science cooking. But they'll get their own set of equipment for all of those different activities. To minimize as much, you know, touching as possible. Um, everything will be disinfected to start the day and then to end the day. That's, that's one of the, the hard and fast policies of holding a camp uh, under these conditions that everything has to be disinfected at the end of the day. Um, uh, and the other kind of piece is, is that staffing is, you know, typically we have, we have a certain amount of staff onsite at any time. Um, under the current coronavirus, um, policies, you, you basically cut your staff in half. And half the staff works a Monday, Wednesday, Friday schedule. The other has, half of the staff works a Tuesday, Thursday. So in the event somebody does come down with coronavirus, the entire staff, the entire set of kids aren't, um, you know, in physical contact with that child. That's why the, the small group settings are in place, the disinfecting and to minimize as much risk as possible, you know, obviously understanding, um, that anytime you have a, a public event or a public, you know, gathering with children or with, you know, frankly, any of us at, at this time, you know, there's a level of risk, but you want to put into place things that'll minimize whatever risk is present.
Okay, so I'm gonna go back to the, to my original question. Are there gonna be things that are used like basketballs? Where multiple hands are touching them throughout the day? Are there gonna be things like baseball bats? Are there gonna be things like that where, uh, I know that you're saying you're disinfecting them in the morning and in the evening, but throughout the day, where they're being passed from hand to hand to hand to hand? And between the start of the camp and between the end of the camp, they've passed through twenty-five hands?
Yes, so the-
And the reason why, I, 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 I'm just gonna cut to the chase. The reason why I'm asking this is because, uh, like, I'm a frontline worker. I work in a grocery store, so I've been doing all of these mitigating sanitizing activities, like, for a couple of months now. And we have it down to a science and we actually sanitize, like, three times a day, any surface that was touched by multiple hands. So you're talking about handles, doorknobs, like ev- everything. It's not enough to do it, like, once in the morning and once at night. We do it multiple times throughout the day. So that's why I'm asking, like, what kind of equipment is gonna be passed around between these cats?
Sure, so, so yeah, I agree, you know, disinfect multiple times throughout the day. Uh, and the exact equipment that you're talking about, basketballs, baseball bats, um, some of those group activities, equipment will be passed between the small groups. So, kids in the kindergarten, first graders will have their own set of baseball bats, basketballs that will be disinfected. Um, but there, there's literally no way that it cannot be touched by multiple people in that small group at some point throughout the day.
Mm-hmm.
So, so that, that's kind of where there's a certain level of risk
Jake.
Within the small group setting.
Let me make a comment that the CDC issued a, um, I don't know if it's a guidance or this comment this morning. Um, that transmission from touching surfaces is a very, very core method of uh, transmitting the disease. The real risk is person to person coughing, breathing, talking, you know, the airborne, uh, moisture. Uh, and that, and that surface transmission is, is not, uh, a hu- a huge risk. That was a CDC guidance that was put out today. So, I'm not saying there isn't a risk, um, and that all uh, precautions shouldn't be taken, um, uh, but, but it's, uh, ju- just a factoid came out today, so.
Yeah.
I, I've been living, I've been living this every day for a month. And I practice it every day and you can't, there's no way that you can be too cautious. So I would just urge that you implement multiple sanitizing of any hand surface, like, throughout the day.
I, I really-
I fully agree. Well, point well taken. I agree.
I wear-
Because all it takes, all it takes is for, all it takes is for one asymptomatic to be touching that and you've now just spread it through, for, through wildfire through your camp. And it does stay on those surfaces for hours.
It stays on those surfaces.
I, I spend, I spend hours a day sanitizing, hours a day sanitizing.
Jason, Jason's gonna do the best he could possibly do. That's probably one of the reasons you got twelve to, there's, there's so many people to, uh, thirty-five campers. Is that right, Jason?
Well, yeah.
The ratio has nothing to do with your-
Part of your staff has got to be disinfecting. And you, I assume you would disinfect it as much as you possibly could each time a different person touches something.
Yes, it has to be sanitized in between uses.
Wearing gloves, hand sanitizer, hand washing. So there, you know, I, I didn't go through the full guidelines, but there are many layers to minimizing the risk, you know, when there is mutual touching of surfaces as much as possible.
Yes, sanitizing in between uses is key. That's the thing. The once in the morning and once at night is not gonna do it.
Yeah, I think-
Sounds good.
We're gonna do the best we can, Christina, but all of life is a risk. I, I might get hit by a bus tomorrow morning. Um, that's the way it goes.
Your computer way not here, your voice way not working.
Fine, if that is your personal motto and that's how you live your life, but that is not okay when you're, when you're accepting other people's children into your program. It's just not.
Nobody is forcing any children to come to the program.
No, but I think that, I, I think that's a different issue. Jason has already, uh, lined up exactly what he needs to do. And I, if I remember correctly, or maybe I'm reading too much into it, it, it already de- demonstrates the fact if any item that's transferred between one and another gets increased, uh, gets disinfected before it goes to the third person. I thought I, I thought that was in your, your, your write-up, Jason. Is that, am I wrong? Am I just thinking it or is it, is it the way it is?
Yeah, it's, it's disinfected multiple times throughout the day, sanitary wipes, hand washing, so. So ab- absolutely, but Christina makes a good point. It, is, you wanted-
You can't be, you can't be too careful, but it, it, uh, David's absolutely right. I read the same article. They were, they made a big thing, a big, a big effort to realize, for people to realize that this issue of the mask and all that kind of stuff is really important because you get, the real way of getting this thing is through the, through your, through the little things floating in the air. The, uh, idea that it's on the, some piece of equipment or a counter or whatever, makes it very difficult, doesn't much move and so forth and so on. But that doesn't mean you can't get it. So Christina's right in the fact that we should do as much as possible. And I think that Jason has lined up a program to do that. So, at least at the moment, I'm not too concerned about that. I think, I think we've covered the bases. It's a good com- it's a good comment from Christina though because, I mean, I've seen the people in the supermarkets do this and they're, they're pretty active, I must say, to say the very least. Uh, who had, does somebody else have a comment up, up there about something?
No.
I do.
Yeah.
Sorry, sorry, Mike. I, I, I just wanted to, um, this is actually a good opportunity to say I had the COVID, um, antibody test done yesterday, um, because I am a frontline worker as well, technically. I'm a healthcare worker. And, um, I'm concerned about others who are really in the line of fire, like Christina and people on our public works team. Um, I, it was a fantastic experience. I went onto chesco.org. I just searched for antibody test. I registered online and I went out to Longwood Gardens and I had my test done with my son on Monday. We were negative for both active virus and negative for antibodies. Um, the reason I checked was because I'm expecting to go to start to work again in June. And I wanted to know if I had any antibodies at all. I don't. But the fact is, is that I think it's something that we really need to have all of our frontline people start to, start to do if they haven't done it already.
I, I-
Is that everybody? Is everybody wanted to say something, have, have an opportunity to say something? Because if, if that, if that's true, then we'll go back to, there's, I think, three items on the, uh, the, uh, that, that was reported out to us. One of was the Malvern, uh, request, uh, uh, which I think, uh, you want to go through that again, John, so everybody knows what you're talking about?
Well, either, John, John had the question of, of why was there a, a funding request letter from the Malvern Fire Company? And the simple answer to that is the second-class township code requires that nonprofits, that township gives funds to a nonprofit, which includes fire companies, that the, the, the requesting organization formally requests the donation and state in general terms what the money will be used for. So anytime, whether it's the Malvern Library asking for money, Goshen Company, um, even though we've budgeted the money and we've been in communication during the budget process about how much they're gonna get, they still have to formally request the money. Um, and it just so happens that this is the time that, that Malvern gets its, its, its contribution annually.
So the amount was agreed ahead of time?
Yeah, yeah, I told them this is what was budgeted.
Do we ever say to them, no, we're not gonna send you the money?
Well, I, I, occasionally, like, they won't know exactly know the number and maybe they might say, you know, we'd request fourteen thousand dollars and I will, I'll email the back and say, well, we budgeted, you know, thirteen thousand nine hundred and three, you know.
Okay.
It, it's never like, never like they ask for a hundred thousand and we give them thirteen. I mean, it's-
That was my next question. Okay, I'm good.
John, uh, oh, was, is, was it, was this sum of money, or, or thereabouts, in the budget that we approved?
Yes, this was the budgeted amount.
Okay, so-
John, do-
All, all they have to do is ask and we send it over to them.
Well, we need to just recognize the correspondence or do we have to make a, a vote on it?
No, you've already approved, technically, you guys have already-
It's proved in the budget, right?
No, you, you already approved the payment as part of the treasures report. It was in one of the batches.
We're just acknowledging, we're just acknowledging it and the receipt of the request.
Uh, Ricky, uh, or John, we got this thing in, and I can't find it now because it keeps falling away out of the papers. There was this item of, uh, where this one township or someplace, somebody did something and I, I can't remember what the hell it was. Are we supposed to, is that just their information? We supposed to do something about that?
You, you talking about the letter from DEP?
The letter from, uh, it was in an envelope, it was in an envelope. It was, uh, from some little group and, and I, I can't find it now because I, I lost it because it fell out with my papers. I've got papers all over the place here and, uh, but it was, it was like in an envelope and, uh, but it also had in a separate envelope, or, yeah, separate envelope, but I think it had a, um, it had a, um, what do you call the things that you see, uh, a petition, not a petition, a, uh, uh, it was an approved, uh, it was an approved thing where it was for people to take it, to take care of themselves is what it was. That was the gist of the thing. Do you remember what it was?
Oh, you mean self, the self euthanasia, um, certificate? Oh, you mean self, the self euthanasia um certificate? I got one of those.
I did not.
Maybe, maybe that's what it was. I don't know. Maybe what it was. I, I, I'm looking for it. I can't find it right now. I, I just, it's here, it's here somewheres and I just can't put my hands on it.
Whatever it is, not on the.
I got it, I got it and I, I, the question, the problem that I have is I don't know, I, I think I see it. Wait a minute, I think I see it. I, I just want to make sure that I didn't get something that nobody else got.
I think you were the only one, you had something in an envelope that put your name on it, but I don't know what was inside.
Okay, that, that, it was written, it was written to me. It's, it has to do with the Pennsylvania Community Rights Network. And it talked about an issue that somebody had, a township had, and I think it was in the state of Pennsylvania, to tell you the truth, I'm not sure. And it was a House Bill eighteen thirteen is what it is of, of two thousand and nineteen. And it talked about basically the right of local self-government. And if I'm the only one that got it, I will, I'll get it to Ricky and then everybody can have a copy of it. Because I, it's rather enlightening to read it as to what this township did. And um, I was afraid that I was the only one that got it. I'm glad, I'm glad I found it. Okay, I'll get it to Ricky and um, or John and uh, they can get it to you guys, to everybody else. And so, you know, because I think, I think there's probably some conversation that we should have about it, good, bad, or indifferent. And um, there is a, there is an organization now that, that's, that's in support of it, so it's kind of interesting. I don't, I don't know if there's any value to us or not, but it's, it.
What's the House Bill?
It'll ki, it'll take some discussion, Michael, but it won't be too long.
That's all right, next agenda. That sounds interesting.
What, what is the uh, house number? What's the House Bill number again?
Eighteen thirteen thirteen.
Oh, okay.
Of session, of session uh twenty nineteen.
Okay.
And uh, it's very short, uh, so it's, it's not, it's not going to be very difficult to read, but it was rather interesting, I thought. And I, I'm glad I, 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 I realized that I'm the only one that has it. Okay, we'll take care of that. Anybody else have anything else that they want on these uh, on this stuff that was in the back? I don't know. Michael, do you want to make your motion?
Uh, first, um, Susan, nobody put anything in my mailbox today. Was I supposed to sign some bids?
No, that's, yeah, you are, Mike. I'll get it to you tomorrow.
Oh, okay, I just wanted to make sure I didn't miss it. I, I make a motion.
Yeah, I'll, I'll second it.
Anybody have any comments or questions from this?
We didn't uh, discuss the right to know stuff.
Oh, the right to know, you want, you want to talk about the right to know? What do you want to know?
Oh, yeah, go over it if you want.
That's just acknowledging the report.
It's there, it's there, if anybody wants to.
If you have any questions about it.
No, I have no questions, but.
So, several years ago, the board has requests, you know, we compile and prepare a quarterly report, so that's all that is.
Okay.
The only thing I'd be interested in to see added to that very good report is the cost of each one. What it costs.
Yes.
I, I think the idea, I think the idea was either get the cost of each one or the total cost, Rick, so we had some idea of how much we were going to.
Wait, 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 wait.
As a tunnel.
No.
An I, an itemized bill on each one, right, Mike?
Well, wait, I mean, none of those right to know requests required any substantial, I've been ten or fifteen minutes of my time. Yeah, that's, and then it's, you know, ten copies or something or ten scans. But I think the bottom line is the only takeaway that you need to know from that, this quarter, there were no right to know requests that required any substantial use of township resources.
Oh, there you go. I mean, obviously, we had the very expensive one earlier that was uh, and I know we've had them at East Bradford, they're in the thousands of dollars. It, it just drives me crazy.
Oh, yeah.
We had a couple of them back ways. That's how this got started.
Please have a lot of them too.
Um, anybody else?
I, I have a question while, while we're here. Am I supposed to sign that bid packet as well or do you just need one signature?
No, no, I need David to sign it and Mike and I'll get them out to you tomorrow.
Okay, I'll be here tomorrow. Thank you.
Everybody okay? We're done now?
Yep.
All those in favor of the motion too?
Michelle, thanks, John, Al, so.
Aye.